Alderman Tudor, give a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? Vote, vote please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mayor report, that's another mayor report tonight. Citizens comments, any citizens comments? Nope, moving forward.
Sherry asked me to extend a look to everyone and to behave yourselves, and she'll see you all on the fifth.
Funding and zoning commission, our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, July seventh at five o'clock PM. Committee report, bill of grants, parcel, safety, Alderman Van Dyne and Alderman Persick.
Mr. Mayor, I move to take from the table the approval of the proposal submitted by Allen's and Mike in Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated for the roof repairs at the old police station in the amount not to exceed $5,690.
Most of Alderman Van Dyne, have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion?
We're gonna go ahead and vote on this, or we're gonna continue and wait till we get that other information?
By statute, we got to vote on the table. Okay. Further discussion? Vote, vote please.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
No.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Six yes, two no, motion passes.
Okay.
I move to approve proposal submitted by Allen's and Mike in Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated for the roof repairs at the old police station in the amount not to exceed $5,690.
Most of Alderman Van Dyne, have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion?
Can I just ask Alderman, both Alderman Halls, just your opinion?
Pardon?
I want a pardon. So you're suggesting don't fix the roof and demolition?
Yeah. And my thought is, we don't really have, like Frank said, we don't really have a real good amount of what that property has worked because there's a lot of stuff pending, okay? They're coming back to take a look at the black stuff that's in there. You know, how much money are we gonna pay to fix that building up so we can get $130,000? Or $135,000? Which you're not gonna get $135,000.
Okay, I agree to that.
So, but it's eighty percent, correct?
Well, if we was to go with the appraised value, which is, what's the appraised value, $135,000? Well, that's the certified appraisal, so if you declare a surplus property and put it out for bid, to be able to accept any bid that comes out of the open, it has to be at least eighty percent of the value for the appraised value, which would be $180,000. Even at that time, you know, that person has to be a responsible bidder at the same time. So at that time, as it comes in, and naturally, if we do surplus property, we declare a surplus property as is. We'll open up everything, put it on the market, nothing else is better than that. So that's how we consider as far as surplus property, as far as indication of black mold and cost. I don't think there's been any cost related to that, we could have had the company come in and assess that, and they'll come right back in, we have to do an update and make sure that that's not black mold. If it is, then, you know, we have to address it regardless if we're secondly is, we don't have the funding in our budget, we didn't put any funding in the budget for demolition of the police station, as well as adding parking lots, you're talking $35,000 plus, I don't know, $30,000, we're getting all left without a couple of seventy, eighty thousand dollars to get it to be a parking lot. And we have to look at, you know, the old city hall, we got, you know, we have the same person going through the appraised value of the city hall, in terms of what we're gonna do with that, those buildings are ours, we have responsibilities. You know, it's just, it's the process, right now, it's, we have to fix rules, we don't, I think if you let it go longer, it's gonna become worse, it's gonna become a bigger expense than what it is right now. $5,700 in our budget is, jump change, I guess the speed's very small. So, that's where we're at. And I understand, I'm not, you know, and others people that wanna see the initial parking, and we've always had a challenge with parking there, with downtown, but traditionally, the only times we have an overabundance of need for parking is when we have, you know, we have this day's festival and a couple of other things that go on, but ninety percent of the time, there is plenty of parking in that downtown area for people to have it to park.
Do businesses that are closed become part of the parking after they close? Is that what that works, downtown?
Well, they park.
Is it, I don't know how that works, like, I know Gary didn't complain, I'm just using him as an example, that his parking lot fills up every night after he closes his doors. Is that not his parking lot?
Yes, this is his parking, he has every right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if people are filling up businesses that are closed, maybe there isn't a need. In mind, in mind.
I understand people tend to park in other areas that, you know.
Yeah, they don't wanna walk.
From a business standpoint.
Two hundred yards.
From a business standpoint, it's up to them, it's their responsibility, their option to allow people to park.
Just anything.
Also, I should, also, I should, I should, I should, just throw it out there, if we had, if we had somebody coming in here to appraise the building, which you said you get eighty one hundred thousand, just throw this out there. Couldn't we go ahead and take that money, and we have a city hall here, we need to have repaired too, the money that we have, couldn't we take that and then put it in capital care? Couldn't we do that, sell the city hall down there, and put that here to get this place to look like we need it? Would that have done?
Yeah, I think the best thing was
I'm just saying, just throw this out there, you know, we're all, you know, the whole of it.
If we get to the process to where we decide to sell the old police station and the revenue comes in typically from a city government standpoint, we have the authority on where we wanna put that money towards. A lot of times, you'll take money from selling property and you'll put it in your capital budget. And the capital budget's pretty much, you know, it's there for capital improvement projects. Fixing the city hall would definitely fit under the needs for a capital improvement project. Is the money already there for city hall? Probably, I think that's in the current budget, we have this money set aside for capital for the city hall improvements. But it doesn't mean that there's other improvements that need to be done, or other things that that money can be used or addressed to, whether it be improvements to the park, or improvements to whatever. That's what we have to determine, once we have that money and are able to learn certain, sell it, probably, you gotta have, pretty much anywhere we want, from government's.
Also, that value that they gave us, that $135,000, is that capital generator or not capital generator? I didn't see that in there.
Obviously, it's capital generator, it's typically assessed, appraisals of property is only for the real estate portion of building, and I am not for any personal purposes.
Well, that's why, actually, I just, you know, we had two people opposed to taking it off table, and I just wanted to have discussions and to hear your feelings.
Not that at all.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Your roll call, vote please.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
No.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Six yes, two no, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, July thirteenth, twenty sixteen, at five thirty PM. Wyler Street, Nally, Alderman Studer, Alderman Kerwin.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the strain associates' engineering service proposal for the Wilmington inflow and infiltration I I investigations for the estimated amount of $162,600 pending the execution of the fiscal year 2017 appropriation ordinance.
Most of Alderman Kerwin, have a second. Second by Alderman, have any discussion?
This is the final project investigation.
Yes.
And the reason we started with this cart before the horse, talking to strand, and that's time to do a lot of this testing is in the low flow and high flows, so July coming up, which is always a low flow month. They'd like to get it started, flip under the low flow types.
It's just an estimated cost?
Well, it's, there's, it's an estimated cost because they do have some reversals that are known in regards to supplies and how many businesses they gotta come out. But generally, it could, it could get a little less, we do some of the work.
If they go through the process of it becoming in excess, it's not gonna back down.
We can, we can add, we can add that to the, before you sign, we can add that they're not to exceed right now anything above, that's the command.
Of any significance, I think, we can, we can add.
It's based on the test results, you're smoke testing, stuff like that, how these tests come out, if they work or they don't work, that's how, kind of what the estimated portion comes to. I just wanna see a $162,475.
I think that's, I think that's how the people find.
Let's, I think, smoke testing, I mean, all the test work is probably maybe a third of what this total cost is. So again, I think, once we get the testing, we think they'll be able to assess how much this is gonna cost to try to fix it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. This I and I project, is this considered the second phase of this testing work? Cause last year, we spent some money on this, correct? Was it around, how much was it last year? And it was just like first start?
Seven thousand, it was seven, nine thousand it was for, just to check the flows, high flows. We're trying to, we're trying to isolate possibly where some of the problems were. So we put some flow meters in some of the bigger areas, and that's where it sort of identified to us, we do have I and I, we have more than just a minor problem, we have a major infiltration problem in our system. So, that was basically what that cost us.
So what does this $162 cover? That testing only cost nine grand, and now they want $162 for the entire year 2017?
They need to locate in the city where these problems are located, and that's with that I and I. The bearing portion was, didn't help identify where the high and low flow areas are from the town actually work. Now that we know where the high flow areas are, now we're doing the testing to, to address this issue. So this kind of testing portion, but.
You know how it is, it's like we start with the broad project, we take that and determine, we got what sections of town. Now this is a more detailed testing, where you're getting down to a more tighter, tighter range. Where, I'll bet you, just maybe that, with a lot of the I and I's, it comes from the older sections of town because back when storm sewers and stuff were built in the sewer systems, a lot of storm sewers were built on top of sanitary sewers, the water just went down to sanitary, there were no EPA regulations and stuff like that. So there's probably still areas where there's faults in systems where storm actually went right into sanitary. But without doing the more detailed inspections, we don't know where. We just know, you know, several block area, I think that's what this testing, the smoke testing, you put it in there, it'll actually pinpoint the exact location. It'll also go and locate everybody, some companies got illegally got fucked up to the sanitary, because they don't want three and L across the ground. We know a lot of them disappeared before our eyes over the last few years, it's very obvious where they went. We had a smoke test, will, it'll perk itself, and it's gonna back up into people's houses. Make sure that's where it's coming from. Fifteen years ago, we did some smoke testing, a lot of the areas in the older sections of town was the floor made people's garage, the floor made actually tied into sanitary sewer. When we did initial smoke testing, a lot of people's projects had smoke from the top, they didn't want, it was actually smoke testing, so people would actually have to close up, right? What's supposed to be sanitary.
Yeah. I think that's incredibly, a huge amount of money to pay for some testing, you know. You know, it's just like, we could use $162,000 to just fix something that we know is an issue.
The hard part is if we don't, and especially because these are EPA tag things, where you're on an EPA violation, it catches more, to try to minimize all the, try to narrow down how much inflow you got coming into your sewer because that determines the size of your sewer system, you know, and it limits your growth, your stuff, your flow. You have all this stuff coming in, infiltration coming into your sewer plant. Now you can take it and minimize the amount of flow that you can have in your city, where your sewer can't, can't. So you try to find areas, correct, and some of this money's built in.
Here's, here's a perspective, you've got 600 manholes that we have to inspect. Got 180,000 feet of sanitary sewer lines in this community that we inspect. So that's video cameraing before, so it's not just smoke testing. We're talking about a whole systems breaking, okay? And what happens with this report too, is this is needed also, once we, once we have identified I and I problem, we can then start organizing how we're gonna repair, and then work with the I E P A. They, right now, they wanted to know if we're, if we're, how are we addressing our infiltration right now? Because we have reports that are accompanied with a two inch rainfall. We'll have a report that all of a sudden, we're processing two million gallons of water at a plant that should be processing probably six hundred fifty thousand gallons. So our plant does have capacity to handle it, two million gallons. But the issue that we're having is, when we get a four inch rainfall, it's gonna, it's gonna be worse. And now it's becoming a steady I and I problem, we're getting a lot of infiltration, and we're processing that infiltration. And ultimately, once we get past a certain level, the I E P A will look at us and put us under monitoring. If you don't have a plan to take care of the I and I, sooner or later, a plant, when it gets to a certain level, we can't process it, it has to go somewhere, and when it goes somewhere, it becomes an environmental issue. Yeah, they might come back, say you have to expand now, because you don't have this thing here. When our last inspection we just had with the, with the I E P A, when he threw off the reports with Darren, he immediately identified, what are you guys doing about it? Darren was able to show him the scope of work, and say, so the budget gets approved, this is being presented with this patient approval. Immediately, he said, well, you know what, I'm not going to look at the internal monitor at this point, but if you don't approve it, you know, I'll come back, I might have it under monitoring. Worst thing we don't wanna happen is go under monitoring with the I E P A.
Especially during those coming in committee meetings.
And companies are asking, you have to pass it, and you're gonna send it to a surveyor. But, you know, put in that respect, 180,000 feet are gonna be inspected.
Fertilized. It's more than a few small bumps.
Yeah.
It's less than a buck a foot, I guess.
Do they think, yes, the system also? They'll, 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 not on video, but.
But the manholes on GPS don't think.
Oh, they have, yeah, they have.
Yeah, wherever you go, that's gonna help, right?
Yes.
Thanks for the explanation.
All right, any further discussion? Vote, vote please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Robinson Engineering Service proposal for the Wilmington Piattone Road and Illinois fifty-three stage construction. County option for the estimated amount of $18,250.
Most of Alderman Kerwin, have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion?
Let me get a quick background on this, cause this hasn't, this is a talk that we had to finalize things. If you remember, we're looking to purchase the right away from a F K M, for, it costed $295,000. We've been working with the county to maybe modify the right away, county has finally agreed to do the modifications where we went to purchase the property. And in our agreement with F K M, it was based on financing availability. So it's $18,000 is to now, now we finally have a scope of work that I D A C will agree to, and county will agree to, to reduce that right away acquisition. This comes out of EDP funding, when we did the budget, we had $51,000 left in the EDP funding. So we're not gonna be going over budget, this will be within the budget of the EDP funding which we paid for from the I D A C.
And we're not gonna make the purchase from F K M.
Correct.
Instead of $229,000, we're spending $18,000.
Correct. $295,000.
We're able to take that person's money from full storage for this project, and instead of buy property, we're.
Yeah, it goes to the cost and everything else.
Yeah, that was a ridiculous amount of money they wanted.
Yeah, we had to, we had to get some people motivated to look at other options.
And, and kudos to Tony and Colby, because there was a lot, a lot of meetings with county to convince them that this is the better option, so. All right, any other discussion?
Vote, vote please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, July thirteenth, at six PM. Please, it has the Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request to hire a full-time police officer with the start date of July first, 2016, and who is replacing the position most recently vacated, as approved and recommended by Police Commission and Police and Asda Committee.
Most of Alderman Studer, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Vote, vote please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, July twelfth, 2016, at five thirty PM.
Finance administration, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Studer?
I move to approve county's payable report in the amount of $219,574.87 and the May 2016 collective report in the amount of $589,170.81 as presented by the city and county.
Most of Alderman Studer, we have a second. Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Vote, vote please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number sixteen dash zero six dash twenty-one dash zero one, and ordinance appropriating for all corporate purposes for the city of Wilmington, purposes for the city of Wilmington for fiscal year beginning May first, 2016, and ending April thirtieth, 2017.
Most of Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion? Vote, vote please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to approve the benefit results for demolition and asbestos payment in the former Widow's Laundry Home and Worthy Bid to Beckstein Construction Corporation, lowest responsible bidder, an amount of $24,740 as recommended by True North Solutions Incorporated.
Most of Alderman Tudor, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion?
Yes, can, can we get verification that this outfit is gonna pay prevailing wage?
I can polish it there, it's fifty, maybe a hundred-year-old union contractor. That was part of the deal. They're signed, you know, like the bargaining agreements for labor operations.
Any further discussion? Vote, vote please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, July nineteenth, at six PM.
Order of license, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Please, person, Alan, collective bargaining.
Alderman Larry Hall, Alderman Persick?
Love them tonight.
Thank you, sir. I was thinking of being the break.
Any engineers report, Mr. Tobias?
Hey, Mayor, jumping into the engineer report, Katy River Bridge, Katy Beach, Chicago Street, First Street. So I had a meeting this morning with the U P and I D A to discuss the city's view and request to do some road purpose to these roadways prior to any work being done on the U P railroad. We didn't get too far, generation agreement, I should say, and they kinda locked out us. So, we'll try to get together here in the next couple of weeks to sit down and rediscuss and, and reach an agreement on the city's end and with their politices to do improvements prior to the project. The initial progress.
Yeah, very simple position, in actual comparison, use our own, which are comparable to the fourth and third project. What we really need, we need a baseline, and how you're gonna determine whether you're creating any cameras to really feel like we're selling based on, so I think there's standards to be there.
Strickland Road, I really have no updates on that, it's more the county approach than the city. Fifty-three South Arsenal, E S I is revising their plans in phases to eliminate the need for right away on the southern portion of South Arsenal Road to move forward with that project. Last time I talked, E S I, based on, everything moving forward, but now that should be issue. I doubt here next, next week or so, with market returns, but that case. Piattone fifty-three, that's what you guys just agreed to approve the Robinson, to revise the plans to complete that, move forward with that project without the initial requirement. He basically gave a timeframe saying that, you know, it may be late May fall by time, you know, looks like we can still move forward with it this year, as long as everything.
So I mean, it's a bit outside, we could be able to start construction this fall.
But that's what he's telling me, yes. It depends on how everything progresses, right out in the county, to go across. That's, that's one thing we push, I kept pushing with them, is hey, if you wanna see this happen this fall, and, you know, period, Gilmore kept saying, oh, it's doable, it's doable. It's a law.
Is it Robinson?
Robinson, yes.
Pretty sharp leash. Very sharp.
Dr. Bellman report, out there reporting, building B, reporting a lot of parking lots on the outside and working on the interior floor for that, for that building, Project Phoenix, just been out there lately, the three wall panels, sides are up, installing the roof, and deconstruction's out there, installing the water main and sewer service to that building.
Aspiratory foods, we changed that.
I didn't buy you those.
No. It's a house.
I was gonna say, that's kinda old. There's a new Project Phoenix now.
Project Saturn. With the railroad, I mean, you guys have, what's your, what's your strategy gonna be here? They don't wanna pay to do it twice, obviously, I mean, we can help with an estimate and ask them to fully bond, what are we thinking, replacement roads, or what, where you gonna go with this thing?
The challenge we face, you know, they, well, I'm not gonna say we'll put them bond, but.
Oh, yeah.
You was, you, if you drive down those roads, I mean, how do you, how do you define a baseline to determine if any type of damage has been done to the roads or not? You know, it's really hard, hard to say because roads have a lot of cracks, and there's a lot of dips and stuff like that. So, there was really no valid way to create a good baseline, and then secondly, even the roads as we sit right now, can't handle that load today, we're gonna put on there. So, the best way to do it is for, to avoid the argument down the road, which would end up happening, is when they're done, you're saying, no, you destroyed a road, they're gonna say, no, we didn't, you know, is to have really a solid, solid baseline. If you've got anything built and repaved, and you got a nice and good road, and they come and they destroy sections of it over the course of the eighteen-month project, well, now you got a good sound baseline, you can be able to demonstrate, show them toward the, where it happened.
They're gonna argue though, that if you're asking, we're asking them to do it twice, there.
In, in reality, you could say that, and I mean, that's what their argument is, but my argument is, no, we're not asking you to do it twice, we're asking you to do it once, and if there are areas that you do cause damage to, then you have to repair those areas, we're not saying you have to come in and pave it all, and then we're gonna pave it all again. We're saying. to pave it all again, we're saying, we want this all paved and give us a good baseline, so there's no argument there, so if there's a section between Mill and Canal Streets that's been, is crumbling and falling apart, you can sit there and say, this was, was created by all this heavy equipment all over the, uh, and then they fix that area, and they fix that section.
Are, are they not willing to agree just to completely repair some of these roads at the end of it? They, well, yeah, at, at this point, they're willing to bond, they're willing
to put extra effort to do maintenance while the project's going on, because this is a public safety issue, we're, we're trying to explain to them over the last, the last couple of meetings, let's say that, that road came in, because we know there's a section that there's a tunnel underneath, that needs to be addressed, we know there's some structures that are, that are basically compromised already, that need to be, you know, those trucks that are coming over, hundred thousand, hundred ten thousand, hundred twenty thousand pounds, those structures are going to be damaged, their response back to us, well, then we'll repair them, well, then the road's going to be closed, and if it actually became Key Street and Water Street that they, they bust, now we got two main arteries that we can't get traffic through, and our fire station's right there, so our fire department's got to be able to get access out of that area, um, and so, I mean, that's our biggest issue right now, is one of public safety, those roads get damaged, yeah, they want to fix them, but it might take two, three, four days to fix, so what's the fire department going to do to respond to our community? So, we want, we want the roads built to a structural, sound base, at this point in time, which we came up to with about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and their answer is, oh, that's a beautification project, we can't do beautification, we go, no, that's engineering reality, those roads can't handle trucks at this level, so till you, till the roads can be built to handle your trucks, you can't use them.
Is there any way that you can use the argument that, for any truck that has gone down that road, they've been issued tickets and citations, and it's marked, and it's posted, and there has been, it's not allowed, trucks aren't allowed because of the way.
Way faster.
And then, then they have, they have the facts, and they have it written, and they have proof.
Our, our position is, we're not going to go on what, what is, what isn't, our position is, they're asking to use our roads, if they're asking to use our roads, we have a right to say no, until they're up to our standards, we don't have the money to put them up to our standards, because it's not impacting our current operations.
They, in a way, you can tell that. They want to make, our, our, you know, our first initial proposal, they could make the argument that a lot of that was built into beautification, because it was a one-point-two million dollar project, you know, we wanted, we wanted, uh, these additional to be done downtown, uh, to improve downtown and stuff like that, um, that was beautification put into it, we took that out, we took that eight hundred thousand dollars out, well, took it out, and I said, okay, we need the base, we need, we need that foundation for everything.
I, I think today, given her very sound position, uh, why we're saying no, it's in their ballpark now, and we'll see what happens.
I, I did bring up, all right, if you don't, if you don't do the improvements first, you do your pride, and then you come back, we expect a higher level of improvement to that road, and he came back and said, well, we shouldn't have to do that, because how